Well, thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners. This is your annual update around development occurring across the city. There's some really good news. First, I want to obviously congratulate the staff of PND. They have been working their tails off. Steve's been, Mr. Gondal has been playing the role of two people for quite a while, but they have been incredibly busy, as you know, being with all of the ARPA funding that has become live this year, particularly as well as all the HUD funding, as well as all of their normal work that they do day in and day out, which is certainly action-packed. So, we have over $550 million that has been invested over the last 12 months. $349 million in economic development jobs. Those are investments to help grow businesses, help with business development and creation of jobs. And another $201 million in community investments, community development, which is, includes housing, it includes amenities within our community, infrastructure improvements. And so, they will report this out in our geographical areas, as we have done in the past, so that you can have an idea as to where and how this investment has happened. But generally speaking, we have, and remember, when I say $550 million, that certainly isn't city funding, right? We leverage private funding. And so, we have over a 30 to 1, public-private leverage. And so, that's pretty impressive with regards to the investment that this team has been working to attract, to bring into our community in economic development or community development.
What was that leverage again?
Over, it's over 30 to 1. I don't want to completely steal this from Sunday. We'll talk in more details later around that. So, I will turn it over to our leadership team in Planning, Neighbors and Development for the disruptive presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor Commissioners, I'm pleased to be here tonight with my leadership team. I have Bronwyn Forrest, Division Manager of Economic Development, Emily Kroger, Division Manager for Planning, and Sarah Geist, Division Manager of Community Development. And I also want to thank Karen DeMasse from Citywide, who helped contribute to this presentation. We obviously rely on our partners. So, as City Managers said, we're very excited. We've done a lot of progress throughout the city and to have this opportunity to share that work with you. And so, I'm going to ask the Division Managers to kind of go through their respective updates as we move around the city.
So, as mentioned, good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. As Shelley mentioned, today we're looking at the last 12 months of our focused updates. We're looking at the work that we do around the adopted plans throughout our city, focusing on those key partnerships that drive more dollars directly into neighborhoods, addressing the concerns of our citizens, and leveraging city dollars to private and other public funding. The first geography we'll talk about is West Dayton. So, again, with our partners in Citywide, a lot of community organizing and engagement has occurred, is occurring in West Dayton. There has been a big push over the last two years about place-making, branding, banners, and wayfinding signs. This has brought some community pride to the neighborhoods in West Dayton, in addition to really helping people navigate some of the industry that's there, such as Five Rivers, the bike park, and other amenities and services. Lakeside Lake continues to be improved. We are working with Public Works and Citywide to install new trees, walking path, and that's in our Pineview neighborhood. Edgemont is doing a lot around community environmental justice. So, there is some, there were some conversations with Apex Tools, in addition to Five Rivers and Edgemont regarding potential environmental concerns around there. So, we have been, our staff has been working diligently with Ohio EPA, in addition to the partners, to get testing done to ensure we know exactly what's going on in that community. Right Factory Engagement, we have been engaging with both the West Pod development, in addition to some engagement earlier this year with the Dillon Group, as it relates to how the Right Factory, what it could potentially look like, how we can engage the community, and that's in our Arlington community. And then, again, other information sharing, neighborhood planning events, and other activities. A lot of that is going on in Madden Hills. Led by Citywide, Madden Hills is developing a neighborhood plan. There's been discussions around how they would like to see housing occur in that neighborhood, in addition to other community amenities. Economic Development Projects, West Dayton continues to see economic investment, and to a tune of $62 million. The Cornerstone Project, Wright Dunbar and Wolf Creek, continues that small business entrepreneurial activity that was kind of spearheaded when we opened up the West Social Table and Tap. So, out of that, in that particular facility, we have two minority businesses going in there, XO Burger, as well as the Wright Dunbar cigar bar, the Wright Dunbar cigar bar, and that is in tune of $7 million. So, that development is $7 million. DuPont continues to quietly invest in their facility. We are working now with their permitting process for them to begin and finish a $20 million investment in their site there on Nicholas Road. They continue to invest. For DuPont, this has been almost $40 million of investment in the last four years. Quick Trip Convenience Stores, who have very good slushies, has opened up in Edgemont. Again, they have had a resounding success. One of the great things that I've noticed about Quick Trip is, is some of our Dayton Police Officers have been there and actually have purchased, you know, slushies and other snacks for kids in the neighborhood. So, it has really become an attraction for the community, which is something that was needed on that corner. Von Bright, they continue to quietly grow there in our, in our Caroline area. They are currently finishing up a $12 million investment that City Commission approved, $250,000 through the development fund to assist in that. And then, Malt Products out in Residence Park, again, quietly continues to expand. This $15 million project has actually realized almost $60 million of investment there at Malt Products in the last 10 years. So, with this project, they're looking to add on at least 30 new jobs.
Community Development, Sarah, you want to add to that?
So, within West Dayton, we've, oh, sorry, forgot the microphone. I'm loud, so I'm not used to using it. Within West Dayton, there's been over $55 million in investment. Some of the upcoming or in-progress projects include the Healthy Family Market, which also includes Dayton Children's West Side Pediatric Care Center. It's about $7.8 million. This is going to be a partnership with Sunlight Village, as well as Dayton Children's. So, that's a regional asset that's coming to the area. Additionally, Boys and Girls Club of Greater Dayton continues to invest within their footprint. They are developing the Teen Workforce Development and Training Center. And then, they are also partnering with Dayton Public Schools to work on a bike path that will connect Dunbar High School and Louise Troy over to the Boys and Girls Club. Homeful Healthy Living Campus continues to move forward. So, this was the construction of Food Hub, full-service grocery store, their doctor's offices, and then a local pharmacy. So, that is just the first phase, and they are working on continuing that past the $18 million investment they've already done, to explore other uses on the remainder of the site. In terms of infrastructure, there's been nearly $7 million in infrastructure improvements, which includes road resurfacing, installation of bike paths, and then traffic calming in several locations. And then, finally, Germantown Crossing, that is a public housing development. It is part of the replacement of DeSoto Bass. As they are, as of a couple days ago, they actually got their authorization from HUD to begin the demolition process for DeSoto Bass. And so, this is one of the phases to help replace some of those units and deconcentrate the public housing in that area.
One of the things Commissioners, I do want to do as it relates to the public schools and bike path, is recognize both Susan Vincent and Ellen Sizer from the planning team, who really sat down and worked with Dayton Public Schools, in addition to the Boys and Girls Club, to secure almost $500,000 for this bike path, and as it relates to safety routes for schools. So, our team continues to be on the ground, listening to community partners, and leveraging, again, other public and private funding to make those type of amenities happen for members in our community. North Central, also known as North West. So, again, community organizing and engagement. Citywide continues to help us lead in terms of our engagement and how we organize communities in North, in North Central. The Pathway Program was the construction of three new homes in the Fairview neighborhood for this program. There was a ribbon cutting held in May. Currently, we have, I know we have one buyer, and I believe there is, there are a couple of the options on two of the other homes. We had an opportunity to walk through, three great homes, two-bedroom, two-bath. It's really an uplift to those residents on that street. Rising at Phoenix, the Lytex Homes. Citywide continues to work with the Home Ownership Center to help those residents actually become homeowners. So, they've been working with credit counseling programs, in addition to other banks in the, in the city, to try to find out how we can get people to come off of being renters and actually being homeowners. So, it's ongoing. They're working diligently with those residents, and hopefully, within the next six to 12 months, we'll have more new homeowners in the city of Dayton. And then, lastly, Dayton View Triangle, they completed a mural, and they're working with Citywide also to help install neighborhood identity signs. These identity signs really are a big deal for the residents, because they help them identify and have some branding as to their neighborhoods. You know, West Dayton is West Dayton, but it's not. It's Edgemont, it's Arlington. In this particular case, in North Central, it's Dayton View Triangle, it's Phoenix. So, these wayfinding and identity signs are truly things that help the community feel a sense of belonging and pride.
Really quick, before we go on, if you remember, Pathways stems from the 2019 tornadoes. The Long-Term Tornado Recovery Group really got behind the Pathways program and has pushed toward establishing homeownership, and it really came from the lack of housing and the impacted housing, and the fact that we had so many renters that were impacted five years ago now. And then, the Rising at Phoenix, there will be additional investment in some of those units as they go up for sale to bring the house and its major components to the current standards, not that they are substandard in any way, but bring them up to a more modern set, because some of the units are a little bit older. They just, they want to refresh things like the roof and some of the other major components, so that the homeowners are coming into a fresh slate, and they are set up for success. They're not coming into something that immediately needs major repairs. Look, it's me again. In terms of neighborhood projects, we've spent over $150,000, some of which is Dayton Recovery Plan funding through the Conscious Connect to do pocket parks. If you've not had a chance to go out there, I highly recommend you do. They are beautiful, and they are fantastic assets to the neighborhoods. And then, Seven Seeds Sour is doing community gardens. About $6.7 million has been spent on the Salem Avenue rebuild. They have already secured funding for Phase Four of that rebuild, and that will include Cornell Drive to Emerson Avenue. And then, Phase Five will be Emerson to Elsmere. This is pretty exciting. You can see it, it touches so many of our other investments in the area. In terms of other infrastructure and facilities that have been invested in, we've spent nearly $10 million on South Main Street reconstruction, installation of bike paths and traffic calming improvements. And then, there have been capital investments at the Princeton Recreation Center, is the teen center, is open, correct?
Correct.
And then, light removal and neighborhood improvements. We've spent over $800,000 on demolition and fire pile removal. In terms of housing that is upcoming or recently completed, Home Flats at Forest is 260 units. That's a $32 million investment at the former Julianne site. It's going to be really awesome. Grand Place Senior Housing Project was about $15 million in renovations, and they are wrapping up their final improvements to those units. So, that has been a complete transformation of the formerly 70 units, now 64, and they've created additional commercial space that had been taken offline. They put some of those spaces right along Salem back into active use. And then, $41 million was a complete renovation of the units at Hoover Place Senior Housing
Southeast in Greater Dayton.
All right, Southeast Belmont. We wanted to take an opportunity to talk about our Activate Belmont project, and what we, you've seen kind of the new improvements down on Waterflee, near Moore's. And I include this in a way to show the importance of flexibility, and as we bring projects forward and work on improvements in our city. Planning in partnership with the Department of Public Works has implemented a project that is much different than the initial vision, when we said we should do something on water relief. And it's also the result of heavy engagement with residents and business association leaders who have very strong opinions on how they should make changes and make improvements in Belmont. So, there's the newly paved.
I was with some of them yesterday, and we took that tour. So, yeah, very, very strong ideas and opinions.
Now, we can agree on that, for sure. But I think it just looks awesome down there. The newly paved street, various crosswalks, there's going to be new trees down there. We have new planters down there, various crosswalks throughout, and this is very, very much about accessibility and mobility. So, we were able to access home, CDBG funds, thank you, Sarah, to get this project over the finish line and create a really impactful project, where we didn't really know where it was going to go all the time, but in the end, I think we've created something that the neighborhood is very proud of and happy with.
And you got it done ahead of schedule. We were hoping to have it done before Belmont Days, and y'all, it looks great.
I appreciate that. And this, this year's Belmont Days is going to have a totally different vibe than last year's. Because last year, I remember saying, yeah, this is, we had a map, this is what we think we're going to do, we'll see. And so, we can now, for Belmont Days, be on the newly improved road.
And by one measure, it's a success already. People are complaining, like drivers are complaining. It's awesome. The owners are happy, pedestrians are happy, and drivers are complaining. So, it really, it couldn't be better.
The raised crosswalk works.
Yeah.
I mean, you can go down there, those cars are not speeding.
I was there this morning, and everybody slowed down. It works.
Yes, indeed.
All right, in terms of neighborhood projects, community development throughout the area is over $23 million. $50,000 of that has been spent on murals slash public arts, such as the McClure Street Bridge Murals, as well as additional community gardens through Seven Seeds Sour. A really cool project that's underway is the expansion of East End Community Services, just under $6 million. They're doing massive renovations to their existing space, and they are actually in the process of constructing a new addition to the building. So, it's going to be a really cool asset along Xenia Avenue. In terms of infrastructure investments, $6.3 million has been spent, and this is just the beginning of improvements to Wayne Avenue's widening, the installation of bike paths, and then also some of the traffic calming improvements that we've seen in the area. And then, finally, Miami Valley Child Development Center. $11 million was spent to create the Consolidated Head Start Facility. It's a 30,000-square-foot facility, also a neighborhood community center, it's got community space in it, on Nassau Street. And this will consolidate some of Miami Valley Child Development Center's other older buildings into this new state-of-the-art facility and become a true community asset.
So, now we moved downtown, and economic development projects in 2000, end of 2023 and '24, total almost $100 million. We lead, of course, with the Delco Office Project, which was $88 million. We saw that as a renovation, a continued renovation of the former Stevenson Building, and the creation of 77,000 square feet of Class A-plus office space. It's a phenomenal space, and really, developers are really working hard to get those tenants into that space. Caney Aerospace, which is located, which is located at 205 East First Street, invested $2.5 million in relocating their growing engineering company from Illinois to here, with ties to Boeing, GE, Aerospace, and AFRL. Their movement here just shows that this is a business destination. It shows that people who are connected with the base, connected with aerospace, is seeing Dayton as that hub. Denae Corporation, which is a Navajo company, a Native American company, purchased the former entrepreneurship center there at 714 East Monument Street, investing almost $6.5 million. This company, again, located out of Scottsdale, Arizona, found Dayton through a site selector process that we do with Jobs Ohio and the Dayton Development Coalition. So, again, our partners, us continually to work with our partners, is leading and driving investment here in the city. Their investment, again, reflects the confidence in downtown and shows exciting development as it relates to proximity to the base. Then, Henny Penny, their Five Rivers campus there at 601 East First Street, that was a $2.2 million investment, and they have moved in completely, and their offices host a team of electrical engineers and software developers. Its name pays homage to the five major waterways that converge in Dayton, symbolizing a central forum for collaboration and idea change. I'm going to continue with downtown and just say that, under construction right now in downtown, in the greater downtown area, or nearing completion, is almost 659 apartment units. That represents almost $179 million of investment underway. So, you see the Commodore, which just received historic, $2 million in historic tax credits there at the corner of Grant and Grafton. You have Webster Flats, which is down at the bottom to my left, again, 105 units of housing, and then Grand Denau, which is currently under construction, which is 160 units of housing. So, downtown, the greater downtown area continues to be a catalyst and a magnet for those people looking to invest in housing opportunities in downtown Dayton. Northeast.
Sarah. I didn't want to be rude. Thank you, Tony. All right. So, there are several large projects coming in the northeast sector of the city, totaling almost $17 million in investment. One of the large projects that is just past its environmental review, so we should start to see movement here soon, is Point Park. It's, it was slated originally at $500,000, and some of the bids are coming in a little bit higher, so it'll probably be closer to $600,000. Citywide and Public Works are working to do Phase One of the approved plan, which includes development, right next, is it the water?
The River.
Thank you, Mad River. There's a couple of different water-focused organizations that are right in the area, and there is an empty parking lot, and so they are working on a plan to rework what that looks like a beautification project, to really reutilize the space and make it a public-facing area that could potentially house things like food trucks and other uses to kind of revamp that area. And then, Citywide has also secured funding from the State Strategic Initiative Fund for additional improvements focused further down the street at the War Memorial. So, that's going to be a really cool renovation of the space and a reworking of some existing infrastructure. Tony will talk about this a little bit more under the Dayton Recovery Plan piece, but there's a $4 million investment at the Point Housing Project. Civitas, which is a minority development company, is partnering with the city to build 16 new market-rate, single-family unit townhomes at Kiwi and Valley. Another project at $8 million is the Kinship Care Housing Project. Dayton Children's in partnership with Model Group and Citywide have put forth a project to construct 26 units of three-bedroom set-aside housing for families that are coming forward to take children who otherwise would enter foster care, and ensure that their families have a safe place that would pass inspections, so that they can take custody while their family is navigating child services. So, that is a project, it is underway. They just finished all of their agreements, they just passed those within the last couple of weeks, so we should see construction starting here in the near future. And then, in terms of infrastructure projects, $4.3 million has been spent on infrastructure improvements that have included road reconstruction, bike paths, and those traffic calming improvements.
Again, economic development. This is one of our strongest economic development geographies, and we've been fortunate that people continue to build and to grow their companies here. JVK Manufacturing, which is a small manufacturing on Troy Street, invested $500,000 in new equipment for their facility. Libra Industries, which just celebrated a ribbon cutting last week, also doing business as Gem City Engineering, $2.5 million worth of investment. They developed a really cool, clean room, that they are doing a lot of robotics. The City Manager was out and had an opportunity to kind of play in the, in the, in the clean room, so it is really a fascinating project, and glad of their investment. They are also one of our companies that work with us through our DREDA program, so we are also excited about that partnership. Dayton Children's Hospital, again, they continue to grow. $85 million is being invested currently in the development and the build-out of their behavioral healthcare facility located there at Valley Street. This is a project that will be used to actually help those children and teenagers who are, have mental health crisis or need some type of, of mental health assistance or behavioral healthcare assistance. So, we continue to be excited about the growth of our, their Dayton Children's. And then, lastly, Sierra Nevada continues to grow. They have announced that they're going to build Hangars Three and Four at a tune of almost $100 million. Our partners in aviation, Gil Turner and his team, have been phenomenal in allowing us to partner with them to see how much investment and how much opportunity is still at the airport. So, we continue that partnership. We're going to be doing a lot more as it relates to development down at the Wright Brothers Airport, but for right now, Sierra Nevada continues to grow and wants to continue to grow here in the city of Dayton. So, now it's Tony's turn.
All right, thank you. So, I had the opportunity to update you on some of our Dayton Recovery Plan housing programs. A lot of these are going to be programs that this commission has approved, and, you know, at this point, you're probably wondering the status of many of those housing programs, so that's what we'll discuss here. So, this, this won't include external awards for housing, such as, you know, the ones direct to partners or direct to certain developments. These are actually going to be all programs that are running through the Planning Division, with, of course, extensive partnership. So, these rows up here are all those related to new housing that will be the result of Dayton Recovery Plan investments in the target areas set forth by this commission. First row you see up there is a completed project, that's at 1005 West Third Street, which is the pre-development work that I know that you all have seen to prepare the site out there at that address for 26 new units, right there in the heart of the Wright Dunbar Business District, that was Dayton Recovery Plan supported for that pre-development work to prepare the site. The, the city is working with a couple developers, GF Bailey, and then Canaccor acting as such, for detached, single-family homes in the Wolf Creek neighborhood. There'll be seven of those proposed. Project manager on that has been Susan Vincent thus far, and we are really excited about the designs that have been put forward for these houses, and I'm going to have a slide showing those here shortly. But we believe that market rate, new detached, single-family homes can be very impactful at Wolf Creek, and that's really why ARPA, the Dayton Recovery Plan, exists in the first place to make otherwise impractical projects practical. The Point, they ever mentioned the Point project and the partnership with Civitas, and of course, talking about partnerships on this project, I have to talk about Citywide Development as well. I know Karen has worked so much in finding a suitable developer for the Point, which is at Kiwi and Valley Streets, and we believe that we have found one in Civitas, and they have been working with their architect, RDA Group, and our vetting and construction companies at this time to hopefully begin work next year on, hopefully next year, on the new construction at Kiwi and Valley, which will be 16 attached, single-family residential for-sale units. Edgemont Homes is three, three detached, single-family homes in the Edgemont neighborhood, being done by Habitat for Humanity. The first one is nearing completion at the corner of Henry Chapel and Campbell. The first one is nearing completion at the corner of Miami Chapel and Campbell. Two more detached units will be constructed on Maitland Street. That's just north of Five Rivers Health Center. That, of course, has been through commission and is underway right now. Susan Vincent has been the project manager on that. And then we believe that Home Flats, which is the two hundred sixty workforce housing units at the former Julian site, is a very, very worthy project, and it could most likely need ARPA funds to get over the finish line, which is why we've been in discussions with Magnus Capital Partners on, is there a way for city Dayton Recovery Plan funds to, to really get this project to where it needs to be? Because two hundred sixty units workforce housing is such a major impact, and this is at a site in a design that's been approved as part of a planned development approved by this, this city commission. So it's, it's got the zoning it needs, and neighborhood's on board, and we believe there may be an opportunity for Dayton Recovery Plan funds. So we're kind of in discussions on the subrecipient agreement and hope to get that to commission for your consideration here next month or two. Okay, so that's all, that was all the new housing relation to Dayton Recovery Plan. There's a couple more of the revitalization-type programs that are underway right now or soon to be underway. These are both being led by Ellen Sizer on our planning staff. One that is going to be just really impactful is the vacant home rehab program with the Land Bank as our, as our key partner there. This is actually getting vacant homes that would otherwise be demolished, that are on track for demolition and bringing them back to a habitable state. At this time, the first phase of homes have been selected, and they're out to bid right now for contractors to begin work on those. I have some images to share with you to give you an idea of what we're going to be bringing back to life, if you will. And then we have the homeowner occupied improvements. That's with our key partner, County Corp. There are about thirty homes right now that are underway at some, some stage, either out to bid or just being completed at this time for key home improvements, whether it's a roof, or siding, or paint, or, or key safety components of housing. There's about thirty units right now that are, that are underway. So, and we, we just, and we know the difficulty and challenges that Dayton residents have in keeping up, but oftentimes, old homes that are, have deferred maintenance, and so this program is working to, to kind of fill that gap.
Tony, can you remind us, between those two revitalization funds, the total number of how, homes that we hope to impact range? Because I know it depends on final selection.
Yeah, so we anticipate being able to impact about sixty to seventy homes through the homeowner occupied, the home improvement, essentially the County Corp. So we'll call that sixty to seventy. I think on vacant rehab, we'll probably end up in the fifteen range. Now, those are the, those are the expensive ones, right? Those are the ones where these are, these are nuisance houses being brought out to life. So those are the two that we hope to impact. And then a couple kind of other categorical programs. Down payment assistance is going to be a very popular program. We are supporting the payment assistance up to ten thousand dollars in target neighborhoods set forth by this commission. I know that the homeownership center is already moving forth on a number of assistance opportunities. And, you know, that's going to, that's going to go quick. We, we hope to set aside some of those funds for the units at the top of the slide. Those that we are creating with ARPA funds can hopefully, we can broaden the potential homeownership base of those who could ultimately purchase those homes by using the down payment assistance, because that's in spirit of Dayton Recovery Plan ARPA.
Tony, yeah, ask me, how much, how much per household?
Assistance?
Yes.
Of ten, it'll be ten, it'll be ten thousand for all of them. And then one other program that we hope to bring to this commission is kind of an open space amenity levy improvements in the Wolf Creek neighborhood. This is where the levy is extremely steep, where it interfaces with the Wolf Creek neighborhood. We'd like to lay back that levy in partnership, of course, with Miami Conservancy District. But we'd like to, to make it a real open space amenity here that you can easily get to the top of, you can access a bike path and have amenities and make it a true gem for the neighborhood, whereas right now, it's nothing but a barrier. We talk so much about transformational change and catalytic change with, with Dayton Recovery Plan funds. That's been the spirit of the program from the beginning. I love the single-family homes, and I love what is proposed at one thousand five West Third Street. I think the levy work really helps get you to that, that target ideal state. Susan Vincent has been working tirelessly to put together an agreement and put together a concept that, that we can implement hopefully next year to, to really make that transformational change for Wolf Creek. I have some images to kind of back some of these programs up here shortly, but I'll run through them real quick. I have a map in here just because it's so cool to see all the points on there now, right? It's all been very abstract for so long, we've all worked so hard to be able to put together maps showing where things are happening now. I won't go through every dot and every point. Some things to point out, the blue areas are those that I just went through that were entitled new construction. The green dots are going to be those where we're doing those home improvements. And by the way, although the polygons, the black polygons are those priority target areas that the commission put forth. So we're mostly, mostly staying in those, although we're allowed to do work in any qualified census tract. We obviously want to stick to the spirit that's been put forth by city administration and commission. Lots of home improvements, particularly in Five Oaks right now. The two phases where we have right now in consideration for the vacant home rehab, I guess, one kind of cool thing about those is that two of those vacant homes are going to be brought back and sold are in historic districts. One in Dayton View and one in Griffin Rockwood Row at Five Oaks. So we're happy to be able to show the points on the maps and show where activity is occurring right now. Just a few more slides to kind of wrap things up here on the ARPA housing program. These are the proposed Wolf Creek designs. These are actually two different, that's G F Bailey on the left and the County Corp design on the right of the two homes there. Both wanted to put forth kind of a modern touch, but also not terribly upscale with the neighborhood, and that's very much intentional, because for all the engagement that we've, we've done in the Wolf Creek neighborhood, particularly Susan and I in our division of engagement, we've heard a lot of residents say, if you're just going to build some old playhouse, don't bother. We want, we want something cool and unique, which I thought was really admirable. Susan might still talk about that. So that one, and what's, the, the one on the left, the house on the left, is really cool, because that's going to have an accessory dwelling unit behind it that you access from like the alley. So it'll actually be two units on, on one lot, all hundred percent accessible, all on one level. So that's kind of like the multi-generational home of the future. So that's going to be really cool to have on Second Street in Wolf Creek. But I, I put all those engagement pictures in there as well, because we've been really intentional about, you know, bringing forth the projects that the neighborhood supports. Through the images of, of one thousand five West Third Street, you guys have, I'm sure firsthand witnessed the changes out there as we've brought it to a state that is development-ready. The designs have been approved by our landmark commission. This is the home done in conjunction with Habitat for Humanity. This is just south of Five Rivers Health Center at Campbell and Miami Chapel. The home improvement program, you know, is just so impactful for these homeowners that just otherwise could not get these improvements, find a way to get them done. So here, this one, you know, this one slide, this is, I think, on Baltimore Street in Old North Dayton. So it's just a few of the improvements that, that were absolutely necessary that would not have happened were not for the Dayton Recovery Plan and the city commission deciding to dedicate funds for this use. New roof, new gutters, windows that were deteriorated, being replaced, paint, you know, habitability issues, and a lot of stuff you don't necessarily see on the picture, like the softens and electric boxes that were unsafe, you know, all being done with this program. Another example of this, the same program here with home improvements. This is Wisconsin Boulevard and Edgemont, I can mention. We're just finishing up this ARPA discussion here, but you know, you see, this is Wisconsin Boulevard and Edgemont. New siding being done, new roof, new gutters, really stuff that'll help preserve our housing stock in this city. And then this is my last slide, I promise. The vacant home rehab, these are two houses, the one on the left being Grafton and the one on the right being on Salem, that, you know, otherwise, we're just going to wallow out there. They weren't necessarily at the top of the demolition list, and they're both actually in historic districts. And we're going to find a way to, to use Dayton Recovery Plan funds in conjunction with our, of course, our great partners on the Land Bank to, to bring these back to, to, to market. And I should mention that Paul Bradley emailed me earlier today. He actually wanted to really be here for this discussion, because he wanted to thank the commission for all the leadership that you've had on, on housing improvements and how much it aligns with their goals. And they've been such a great partner on the vacant home rehab, so I wanted to mention that. Paul, he couldn't be here because he's not feeling well. Okay, that's the extent of why I have on our, but hopefully you get a nice idea of all the work that's being done.
So as you can see, that we are continuously P and B team, along with all of our partners, Citywide, Public Works, Water, you know, Recreation, all of the departments here, we do a lot in the community. And we are so fortunate that we're able to, to, to leverage sixteen point eight million dollars worth of public investment to yield five hundred and twenty-six million dollars of private investment, which is a, that didn't change, it's supposed to be thirty-one to one ratio. And so with that, even with the ARPA, when you break down those new housing projects, six point six eight million dollars worth of ARPA funds leveraged.
The paper.
The paper's right, okay, very good. Almost forty-eight million of private investment in those new homes through our ARPA program. So we are excited about the fact that we're able to be very good stewards of the public trust in addition to leveraging those, those funds to provide the private investment we need to bring those services, those goods, those projects to continue to advance our, our community and our city. So thank you all for the opportunity to serve.
No, thank you, really. The, this is just exciting all the way through. So hats off to you and the staff. And, you know, I know how important it is for the commission, because we talked about challenges that we have. We, sometimes we've talked about behavior of, of citizens, and we've also talked about the aspect of them not having hope when they come out their doors and they see blighted areas. And we see right now so much improvement in those areas. I can't begin to think how to phrase this one question, but this is the aspect of. How can we, it's measured over the last year? In your, in your mind and thoughts because of the work that you're doing, what type of percentage of improvement do you think you may ground and gain on moving the blighted properties and doing work in terms of improving and making things better? I'm not trying to make the question difficult, I'm just trying to.
I mean, you said the magic word, blight, here I am. So I think it's something that, you know.
Blight, blight.
I know, blight, you know, it's like Beetlejuice that's coming back out, blight, 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 and you got me. I think it's something that we'll work with our housing team to kind of assess, you know, as we do that demo update, looking at the structures we identified. Because part of this, as Tony brought out, was those structures Tony pointed out were part of that nuisance sweep, because not every structure on the nuisance list has to be demolished. It's, it's just that first step. And on these ones, we've identified them as these were candidates for repair and rehab. So I think we'll look at those that were identified during those original sweeps, those that have been pulled off either through our work, our partners' work, and those that have been demolished, to kind of see that breakdown. And so we'd have to work on those stats for you.
And Mayor, I think it's important to note that, you know, I think the, the housing condition survey is what reset our baseline. We hadn't done that for many, many years. And so having that baseline information to track on an annual basis, as well as, remember, the ARPA funding is seeding for transformational development, right? And so that means that we have a baseline in those targeted neighborhoods as well that we will continue to keep, you know, directing investment to and continue to leverage, because we knew we didn't, you know, even though we had a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, there's no way it's going to be transformational in and of itself. This is a ten-year strategy. So I think this year, we've just developed our baselines. We'll be able to answer that on an ongoing annual basis as we move forward.
Yeah, I think the reason why I was having trouble with that question, baseline is probably the wrong word to use. But looking at that from that perspective, justifiably, there's been concerns, especially last year, year before last, about where we were before we started doing the AP. And there was probably a lack of trust with regards to what we're going to do with the dollars to make sure we invested those things that were going to cause other investments, if you will. Because it was new, first time, we'd not had that kind of money before. And the aspect of people being disappointed for decades because things were not happening. And now seeing some things happen and being able to justify that. And that's why I was talking about the baseline, because I think once people see the baseline, then they see the kind of improvements that we've made. And it's a really, really big difference in terms of hope and aspirations that citizens have. Thanks, appreciate it.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments?
I do, yes. Mayor? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all to the entire team. I really appreciate you being here. Just a couple of questions, I have a couple, because I made sure that I wanted to give you all my opportunities to go through. These guys actually gave me a question already. So in regards to the fire factory, I know there was a recent fire, the second one. Do we have an assessment of the damage? Or what are we doing to secure that property as much as we can?
We have an ongoing, we have an ongoing contract with a fencing company to, I mean, they're out there at least monthly trying to secure the location, the, the building. The issue is that people go in and they cut, they cut the fencing and they, or they climb the fencing. We are onboarding the structural engineer. We've had to change vendors, so we're working to do that. So we hope to have them on board within the next thirty days.
Thank you. And then for the economic development projects, the sixty-two million, who is the project that is slated, opening or returning date? Was it the Corning Stone Development and Wright Dunbar?
That probably won't be until first quarter twenty-five. They run into some supply chain issues and some contracting issues. So there'll probably be soft openings for quarter twenty-four, first quarter twenty-five. But I'm sure that the commission is invited and able to celebrate the greatness.
Thank you. So community organizing and engagement, it was noted that with the pathways, home owners, new homes, and everything. So you said right now, currently, there's one particular buyer to the AP.
He's already purchased. He's in, he was ready to go before the opening.
Yes.
So then that leaves there's two that are currently in the works.
And they have several interested parties. They're just working with them through the homeownership center. So it's a partnership to guarantee that they're truly bankable and ready to go, and they're not being set up for failure. So they have a long list of individuals, but several that are moving forward that are directly related to the tornadoes.
Thank you, and thank you, Miss Sikes, for touching on it. You really hit the point that I was, you know, I was going to ask in regards to assisting the early years. I think a number of the families and individuals in the Phoenix lot type will be now rolling off for future buyers. So thank you for how I denied. And then the question that I have, in regards to the community development of projects, the grand place, three thousand five days. So I know there are three commercial spaces. Where are they, are they, are you on interest?
They've had several interested, sorry, they've had several interested parties. I can check in with national church residences and see kind of where they're standing. Their main focus was on getting all of the residents into finished units. So while the commercial spaces are being or have been updated, their main focus was truly on getting the housing portion done. They've had interest from several organizations, but I do not believe they have full tenants yet, but I can give you a solid answer.
All right, excellent. Thank you. And then while we're talking about that particular chart, the community development, you're actually moving around Five Oaks, it looks great that, I'll talk apart in the corner. But then it leads me to like the blight, 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 right? When you talk about Delaware, Richmond, over in that area. So what are we doing, especially within regards to, I believe, Mr. Carver mentioned that there's potential interest in using DRP dollars in that area? So what's the, the focus and how are we going to leverage the demolition and the potential renovations of those various properties?
So especially in Five Oaks, the demolition portion is close to, it should be about wrapped up. Tony kind of mentioned. be about wrapped up. Uh, Tony kind of mentioned the next phase of the rehabilitation of the remaining structures is kind of underway and, and we'll pick up in earnest there. Uh, so we have, I mean, there's more to do over there, but, uh, a lot of the problematic properties have been moved. And, you know, working with the land bank on proceeding with their, their records up there. Um, and then your second.
I have a second question. It was more so in the DRP with the redevelopment of those particular properties.
Yeah. So we've, with the, the DRP and Five Oaks.
I'm sorry, I guess the other question, because I was under the, um, the impression that all of the DRP funds were obligated. So is that not accurate or?
They are obligated in, in housing. Remember, housing got a pot of money.
Right.
And so there's, as they define the opportunities, there's been, but it's still housing. It's still allocated based on the plan, right? So they have some operational flexibility because they may identify a property and then it may not be able to go forward with, you know, reinvestment or whatnot. So that's what they're referencing.
Yeah, like the programs are, are set, right? And we were, you know, certain pot of funds for the housing improvement program. And, um, well, this kind of matchmaking, right? Like, you know what I mean? Like, we have to find the right properties. Some of the, some of the vacant stuff, actually, properties have to be acquired. A lot of that's kind of occurring now. That's what the land bank's doing through the receivership program, right?
Right.
To acquire properties. It's still hard to acquire properties. I know you know all this. Um, and they have actually several targets of Five Oaks to, to add to that vacant home improvement program, such as those on like, there's in the Harvard area. Five Oaks is so interesting now. It feels like it's like four or five different smaller neighborhoods into one. Because like the Grafton, Rockwood Row area, further south, it's really stable and strong. And it looks fantastic. And then we're going to have like the one that really needs it there. Um, so we're going to get what we can for vacant home rehab. We've done quite a few home improvements through there. Um, home flats, I think is going to be a, a huge thing for Five Oaks, the park, those streets. So, you know, every opportunity you can. So I think we have, you know, you remind that, well, the funds had to be encumbered by twenty-twenty-four, which they are. Deutilization can occur in twenty-five, twenty-six. So that Tony's part will, while the demolition part has been encumbered and mostly completed, Tony's work will be able to continue into the remainder of twenty-four, twenty-five and through twenty-six.
And the economic development, please. I know this is a 77,000 square feet, and the developers actively working to occupy the space to get those various space under. Do we know, do you have a total of how, how much square footage is actually occupied or under contract right now? Or is it everything?
He's finalizing several contracts, so we don't have a, a specific number at this point, yes.
And then the greater downtown housing investment, do we have a breakdown? I know we, we're six hundred and fifty-nine apartment units, but I would, I'm interested in seeing like the breakdown from the moderate, low to moderate income families. Like, what is the breakdown in terms of the, of the units itself?
The units.
Out of the sixty, six hundred and fifty-five apartment units that you.
We can get that, we can get that to you.
Okay.
I have it, we can get it to you.
Okay. That'd be great. And then, so, yeah, economic development project. Um, again, I want to commend you all for the great work you all are doing. And thank you very much for, for your, your commitment and well-being, your sneeze and, and getting your, you know, the data and the, because, um, so the children, hospital, the daycare, healthcare facility, it is that with the project in line with the Ohio Department of Development?
No, it is not. This is Dayton Children's, um, has received several donors in addition to additional funding to actually build their own standalone behavioral health center. And that's what this is. This is, this is a continuation or a consolidation of their, their facility downtown in addition to some others. So they're looking to actually have one place that can be full service in addressing the mental wellness of, of babies, youth and young adults.
Do we have any updates on the behavioral health center that is proposed from the public, the Ohio Department of Development or?
We just were contacted about that yesterday. So no, we don't have any. We, we, we have, just to answer your question and provide you an update, we were asked to move forward with or to advance a potential location. We did that yesterday. That's all we know.
Okay. And then the workforce, how are we doing with Sierra Nevada? Given that there's additional commitment for the, the three and four hangers, I would assume that we are meeting the, um, expectations or obligations as it relates to the workforce. Because I think that's one of my biggest concerns that we have, along with many of this, but.
No, Sierra Nevada is onboarding actually very appropriately. And with the fact that Sinclair's Aeronautical Center is co-located there, it has truly been a, a great partnership in their ability to actually get employees from that, that program.
Okay. I think I just have one more question. Thank you very much. The Dayton Recovery Plan, the Housing Improvement Program, and I don't know if this fits in the, in the DRP, but do we have an update on the Cambridge Two development? When you're talking about the various units?
Yeah, it's not part of the DRP.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the.
Cambridge Two.
Cambridge Two.
Oh, Cambridge Two.
Yeah, that's not part of DRP, but we can get an update for you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. And with the critical repair program, and I do believe that was a part of the DRP with Habitat, do we have an update on that and, and that place there? Have they obligated all of the funds and how many total, what was the total impact?
So, it's hard to do, sorry. Hold on, just, I know. It's really hard to do roofing in the middle of winter. And so we saw in the spring a really big uptick in the number of roofs that have moved forward. Um, so that's still in process. Um, they're still working through their waitlist of individuals who have requested it and doing assessments on whether or not roofs can truly be replaced, if there's more than the roof. Um, so Habitat in partnership with, um, our Dayton Housing Recovery Network are looking at, um, instances where maybe work with County Corp or Rebuilding Together Dayton can come in and actually do a collective impact. So it's not necessarily just the roof. We're not putting a Band-Aid on a larger issue. Um, so we can get you solid numbers on how many have been completed versus are in process. Um, but we did see, um, a drop in the winter because it's really hard to do roofing when it's five degrees outside. Um, but it's moving forward. They're moving quick and, um, it's been really successful.
Thank you. I appreciate it. If you could provide us with an update on that. Because you're aware the number of people have been impacted and you received a number of calls and their appreciation and that is.
Sure, of course.
Well, that's all I have. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, Mr. Ketchup.
First, thank you. It's over half a billion dollars of investments. That's, thank you. And, um, I think by your comments, you'll see that thing, like a new day here. Um, I want to amplify the mayor's request around trying to be able to see, um, you know, the baseline on the housing, conference, review of the housing. And if I understood you right, Mr. Gondo, you were going to add that into the monthly report or?
No, so we'd look in, we'd look in and get back.
Okay, okay. I thought I heard you say that you would add it into the monthly report, which I thought would be amazing. Um, but we could at some point on the horizon maybe do so. So that we can see the progress we're making on that baseline.
What, what development, Commissioner?
Well, I thought the mayor was saying, how do we recognize the improvement we're making?
Just want to see the baseline in terms of where we were.
Yeah, so we got.
I think that's, that's logical until some type of continuous basis, you see that.
So we got the baseline, we established the baseline. I know there are some revisions as we've gone back out. Um, but as we bring houses down and we, you know, and there's some properties in our control that we're going to rehab, it seems like we could show the improvement on that baseline. Um, so, I mean, maybe it's not every month, but at some point, if there's a regular kind of reporting on that, that, see how we're doing on that baseline, how we're narrowing it. Because I would, I mean, if I remember correctly, it was a lot smaller than we anticipated.
Correct. So that's the work that we, we've now got a baseline. Now we're putting together the, the, the way to report out on that.
Okay.
So my point was saying demolition is, is an easier thing for us because we can move faster on that development. You know, annual reports, annual reporting as to the impact we're having is more likely because it takes six to nine months sometimes to just get the agreements in place or programs going or, you know, it's, it's a slower moving animal. But we absolutely will have some updating reporting to do to the commission so that you're all aware and can see the progress that we're making. Because we'll also, we can't forget that it's not just on us. There's a lot of private activity that goes on. And so as we go out every year and look at our, our environment and reassess, there's, uh, there's things that happened that we didn't do anything with, but others did. And so we capture that as well.
Anticipates part of my comments and what I mean. So, um, but, sorry, I didn't have the timing correct, but just wanted to.
Yeah.
Affirm what the mayor was saying, affirm that we have a baseline that we can start to see, be able to engage some of that improvement. So I think that's exciting. Um, we had the, um, the housing committee, um, coming together and the, um, housing plan. In there, we had a market study that identified the gap in terms of, um, units that we needed for ownership and the gap that we needed for rental. I remember at the time, we were seeing that we look at that by segment. I don't know if I've ever saw that, if we had that. I think we, it was said that we had that information.
We, we were looking at how far we can get down to the local level. I've been working with Amy Regal and trying to identify, because that is at an MSA level and, or to the county. We haven't been able to stay in Dayton city proper. There isn't a source for that.
Okay. I missed, I have to go back and look at the report because I thought that was for Dayton.
It was for the Dayton region. It was a larger, and then they extrapolated to some degree, but we don't have localized Dayton, um, and round data.
Okay. Um, good. And then the, the question I have is, as you were talking about getting that annual report and the private investment, I was curious how we do capture that private investment. Right? I mean, there's a, you have a big home in Richmond that got private investment and redeveloped very close to Harvard. I don't know if they had to pull permits and whether we capture that information that way. I think of like One Yale, see them start and stop on that, you know, and what, what more we can have to kind of encourage them to sustain their development on that. I don't know if we have a mechanism to do that. We're talking about the, the apartments there between Grand and North beside the post office. I think they put a parking lot in, if not a whole lot of other. I, I just didn't know how we track that private investment, kind of a sense of how that impacts those gaps in terms of.
There's a number of ways that we track it. We, sometimes it's through permitting, but permitting is not necessarily the most accurate because people tend to discount the value that they're investing because it discounts the permit cost, right? And there's not a way for us to police that effectively. We also, um, if it happens in one of our CRA areas, they often are applying for that abatement. And so remember, every year in the spring, at March, we do our Tax Incentive Review Council report out and that has all of the private investment that's happened in our neighborhood, in our CRA areas. That's the, that's a housing report that we do annually. Um, and then other times it's just conversations that staff are out and about and they know about project investments. Um, the grand, um, project that we talk about on our North Street, you know, that first, um, phase is almost done internally. So the, and they can give you an update because I, I had one to give you.
Right.
But anyway, so the parking lot was a part of, it came after all the internal renovations that happened in the one building.
No, I think it's exciting that we're having this conversation about, you know, knowing where we are with the baseline and thinking about how we start to mark the improvement.
Yeah, I think it's very exciting. You did, Sean.
Yeah, well, I'm, I just, I know I will have comments or questions, but I'll, I'll direct them to, to you, Shelby, and those answers. But I'm glad that you kind of ended on the Tax Incentive Review Council because I went straight to this back page. And this is remarkable, thirty-six dollar to one dollar return on our investment, leveraged investment. Uh, we've just got to talk about that more. And, uh, it's, I'm, I'm just glad that you and that you kind of broke it out. Just more bold, more explain.
Mr. Jolton.
Uh, yeah, two comments. Uh, well, actually three. I want to join my colleagues and thank you all. This is, you know, join my colleagues and thank you all. This is, we lived through times that were very lean. I know I've said this before in these settings, but, you know, we would have presentations that were one hundredth of this dollar. And we would be pretty excited about it. This is, this is, thank you all for your persistence, your patience and hard work. Um, and, um, my first comment is actually going to be related to this, and that is, uh, it takes a long time, like Sidney just said. It takes a long time, not only to do these deals, but it takes a long time to convince people that these deals weren't doing. Uh, images stick in people's heads for a long time. And we have been wiping out those images for decades now. Couple decades we've been working towards this, especially the last decade. It's been wonderful. Uh, so things are only getting better. So my first comment is, I love the, just like you all, the home flats on the Julian site. Um, and I, I'm curious about your vision, whether you think that is something we can replicate on different sites. Uh, is that, will we need to subsidize? Or do you think that it will be so successful that developers may find a way to do that on other sites? Because after having sat through those discussions, when I'm driving around, walking around, I see sites that like, you know, what a good place for, for another.
Yeah, I think Magnus, who they're on, and they're on Grand Rapids, they, they've really found a great formula to do workforce housing and full range of incomes. Um, and I went to their sites up there in, in Grand Rapids where they've done similar developments. And they've really found the formula to do it. I, I, we get inquiries fairly often on old school sites, which may be those that, that you are seeing. Um, and then almost always, um, want to do a low-income housing tax credit project. And we'd say to, to that respective developer, say, hey, you know, it's a single family. It's going to be on, you're going to need a zoning change. We will assist to the degree that we can. Um, and sometimes we never, we usually never hear from them again. Magnus had more persistence and probably more technical expertise than the most developers that come randomly with an idea, um, to do a low-income housing tax credit project on, on these sites. I think we, we, we'll see more of it for sure. And I think we've seen more interest recently, um, especially the old school sites for senior housing. I think there's a new formula out there for that. Sarah, do you want to?
Yes, the, well, I think we'll see a really big change in low-income housing tax credits because the, the application process has really shifted focus to opportunity zones, which are census tracts that meet that qualification. And, um, it's really limiting the areas in the city of Dayton that could qualify for Lytec. Both the four percent and the nine percent are impacted, um, by this change in the formula. And I think, um, Tony, this project is really phenomenal because it is bringing a different model and a different capital stack that we don't normally see. Um, I think we've had a couple of conversations with Magnus about, um, different sources and different uses that they may have. And, um, their focus is truly on the workforce, income and above. Um, they, they just have a model that is going to support an area that our typical funding sources do not typically go for. Um, and I think this is going to be transformational and that, once they see that our market can support a project that doesn't necessarily have to have Lytec as a support mechanism, um, you're going to see other developers come in willing to bring a capital stack that changes the game in terms of development here in Dayton.
I just want to make one clarification because there's nomenclature, opportunity zones, non-opportunity zones in the investment-driven opportunity zones. These are high or very high opportunity neighborhoods, different, completely different animal. And so the, the Lytec projects are being really directed in those, and that's why Dayton's having a hard time competing.
Yes, it's truly census tracts that, uh, and it's really, I think we have a very, very few number. And it's really limiting the geographies where we have land and space and capacity to put in those units.
I think additionally with this project and, and looking at the Magnus, the pictures that Tony brought back from the Magnus projects, they also want to work. that Tony brought back from the Magnus projects, they also want to work with preschool promise to bring in childcare for those residents who are working parents. Um, I think another thing that this will do, it will actually to have our current employers kind of look at this as a model of a place where their employees could live. Um, it's adjacent to bus lines, it's walkable. So I think this Magnus is truly, to Tony's point, has created a model that could fit here. And we've actually kind of vetted other sites with Magnus. So, and it also with the market, with the workforce housing, it'll allow those market rate developers to again continue to look at Dayton as an opportunity to develop that market rate housing that we also need here in community.
I think, uh, I'll let it say, go ahead.
Oh, just thinking about Commissioner Joseph, thinking of some sites, I think of that old Belmont High School site over by the library. And does Magnus look at that site? I mean, that's gotta be a prime site for some kind of development like that.
I think we're trying to get this one over the.
I'd love to hear that. This, this is, I really love to hear that. This is awesome. And that was, I'm glad you're all thinking that way. I'm glad to hear that. It's, I'm excited to see where that goes. Any other comment? I, I do want to thank you for your patience with Belmont. Uh, it, it doesn't look anything like we expected it, but it looks great. It really does. Uh, and there is so much potential there, so much potential there. And having folks slow down, making pedestrians feel safe, that's the first step. I'm really excited to see what happens there. It looks great. Thank you all for your patience. Please take it back to your stat. I will, yeah.
So the residents there at Belmont, I was very excited about that. Was bragging about their, I think the Belmont Days, December twenty-first, I think it kicks off around that timeframe, so they're, they're talking about that a lot. Yeah, I want to just say, um, uh, how exciting this is, how exciting this whole conversation is relative to the big picture issues as far as the city is concerned. With both employment, with housing in those areas, uh, additional announcements yesterday about jobs that are coming to, to Dayton, the On Main project and that strong connection to Wright-Patt as well. We know from just logic and, and research that those communities that have the highest median income have the highest quality of life. And we continue to raise the median income by having more and more, uh, individuals who are coming to Dayton with jobs. And we have an abundance of jobs, almost three jobs for every person it seems like. But the aspect of how we make those connections. And we'll be looking to some, some of you for ideas and thoughts about how we making, uh, investments or questions for things that we can do to help you, if you will, find ways of filling those houses so that we can again get more and more people moving into the city of Dayton and continue to raise the median income. When I was talking with the governor last week, although initial conversation was dealing with the balance issues that we have, I talked about that, but we also were talking about investments, such as one that was announced, uh, yesterday. The, uh, aspect that they have to do in better jobs on the other end in terms of how they prepare people for employment. So while we create more and more jobs, we have to have people for those jobs. And clearly you're working hard when you can, so to get people places where they can stay where they have those jobs. So on the base, as we had announcements, I think last week, a couple of weeks ago, uh, their employment has doubled, um, thirty-eight thousand, I believe it is. Uh, it's, it's hard to try to understand how we can make a better pipeline from Dayton to Wright-Patt. And I think that would be transformational as far as the city of Dayton is concerned. But, uh, we've talked, uh, uh, no, specifically not talked with, um, uh, Steve Johnson, maybe two years ago, about the aspect of expanding that program, uh, that they have with the, uh, the hangar that is used as a classroom right there at the airport. And we talked about why we had so few people from Dayton who were in that program. And the, the aspect of some of them, many of them, we talked about, even some of their parents and associates did not want them to work in what they called, um, those type of jobs where they didn't wear a suit and title work. Okay? They want more of their, their young people to go to Sinclair or someplace, get a job where they can wear a suit and title work as opposed to doing a job that pays you eighty-nine thousand dollars. So there's a, there's a change in thought process that I hope that comes about. I know we're talking to young kids in the air camp, uh, to those, uh, young people to understand, here's a job where you can wear maybe gym shoes and, you know, a T-shirt even, but you go home with a eighty thousand dollar paycheck. So there's a, there's a thought process that has to change relative to that. Because initially in that program, about twelve, fifteen people there, none of them were from Dayton. None were from Dayton. And we only have one minority in the program. So I know those numbers are gonna change. That's it. So you guys have anything else?
I have nothing else, Mayor.
I have one closing, I defer just in the spirit of numbers, which is a planner, it's our last thing we want to do. So I'm glad Veronica and Sarah, even Tony's a good numbers person for a planner. Fun fact, three fun facts. No, Tony's given numbers, I'm not. Uh, three years ago, the city manager had a vision of merging planning, community development. Six months ago, we actually brought the community development, economic development teams up to the sixth floor with our director's office and bunch of your, um, engagement, planning division. Four months ago, Veronica coordinated an offsite retreat with these three divisions to kind of bring together. It is absolutely working. I mean, what you're seeing here and the camaraderie, it, you would think that there would, you know, there's always been collaboration, but by bringing it into one department, bringing it onto one floor, we are absolutely seeing it. We have staff kind of intermingled, uh, on the floor. That kind of co, you know, co-location is truly creating this, being together, talking, not having to go arrange meetings just to kind of catch somebody, get a coffee. I really do think that it is, uh, a testament to the city manager's vision. And I could say from these stuff that we all believe that we're on board, it's working, it's helpful. And, uh, you know, we're seeing some great outcomes of that work, or that merger, so.
I wanted to add that, uh, these are, uh, the work that you're reflecting are also going to fund the priorities from the commission. So we talked about this, each of us have talked about this on a continuous basis. And, uh, you guys have done a great job in terms of, you know, uh, pulling it together, okay, and put it into action as far as the state is concerned. So thank you so much for doing that. Appreciate you.